Good afternoon, everyone. We will get out of the way. If you'll just take your seats. Thanks, councillors. We have apologies from councillors' order. Apologies to councillors Bezett and McTavish for lateness. And I will move from the chair that we confirm the agenda with the addition, can I inform councillor of a submission from the chairs of the Saddle Hill and the Moskill-Tairi Community Boards who have asked today if they could come in and make a brief submission. And I suggested that would be fine. But I would note, bad. We are very tight for time today, so it will be a somewhat restricted time slot, but we'll do what we can. So I'll move from the chair that the agenda with the addition of that submission from the chairs of the Saddle Hill and the Moskill-Tairi Boards be confirmed, seeing to councillor Staines. For those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry on. Now further move from the chair that the minutes of the public forum held on the 3rd of November 2014 be confirmed as a true and correct record, seeing to councillor Staines. For those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry on. So into the substance of the public forum. Mr Stedman, would you like to join us up here? This is Mr Stedman from the Tairi Community Facilities Trust. Welcome.
Worship, councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today for a few minutes. But before I begin, I would like to place on record and acknowledge the support that the trust has had from the staff of council in preparing this report. It has been truly tremendous and it's been a very positive working relationship. The report that the trust is presenting today is the outcome of a council resolution to contribute $30,000 to a feasibility study. And that is defined and agreed under the memorandum of understanding between the DCC and the Tairi Community Trust. And that was signed on the 19th of September. The trust has prepared the report within a very demanding timeframe of 10 weeks. We delivered on time and against all of the criteria required. In preparing the report, the trust drew heavily on the previous work of the Accountful Aquatic Facilities Working Parties and the STL report commissioned by council. And that report recommended a new facility on the Tairi. We didn't set about to reinvent the wheel. We built on the existing and strong body of work that had gone before, and that's seven years of work. The study was required to report on the facilities options, capital expenditure, operational expenditure, site preference, community engagement and funding options. The trust has not at this stage considered or explored ownership other than that of council. And that was mentioned in the memorandum of understanding. The existing pool on the Tairi is 80 years old. It was opened in 1935 when the population of Moskill was about 2,500 hardy souls. The first aquatic facility on the Tairi was sandbagging the Silver Stream and using that as a swimming opportunity. However, floods and freshers meant that it had to be rebuilt almost every season. So good farmers, being what farmers are, said, don't like that, we'll build a pool. And so they set about building a pool. And that was built by the community. The existing pool cannot serve the wider catchment of 29,000 that's growing around it at about 7% a year. So when you consider that it was a pool built for 2,500 people and we're now talking about 29,000 and growing. The other thing is that the current pool is only open seven months of the year and doesn't cater for toddlers, learn to swim, the elderly or any of the other health-related aquatic exercise programmes. Most reports have given the existing pool a life of about 10 years, but that assumes some capital expenditure. It does not and cannot in its present form meet the needs of a significantly larger and changed community. We explored as a trust replacing like with like, but concluded to do so would continue the severe limitations of the existing and current pool. That is, the inability to meet the needs of the very young, those needing to learn to swim and the increasingly older population that is now part of the Tairi. Like with like would be replacing or would replicate 1935 planning and that is not a way to look to the future. Therefore, the council at some stage is going to face in the not-too-distant future the issue of replacement or closure of the facility on the Tairi. My guess is it's 10 years, 10 years plus, but it is pretty imminent. In preparing the report, the trust engaged the services of the Logic Group, who are engineers, Baker Garden, who have already done some design work with our council on previous pool concepts, and Comptons. To determine what a new facility should include, the trust engaged the community in a number of ways. We developed a website, part of which backgrounds a proposal for the new facility. Visitors were invited on that website to fill in a comprehensive online survey. 2,400 people filled in that survey, the results of which are in the report that you have with you. The trust also presented a 20-minute presentation to 78 groups on the Tairi and the wider catchment. And that was undertaken with the support of the Tairi Wellbeing Group. The trust received 80 letters of support from a wide variety of organisations and individuals. Based on the feedback of 3,000 people on the Tairi and benchmarking against other facilities with similar populations, it became clear we needed a facility that can meet the needs of users that are 2 years of age and through to 92 years of age. And that it must have a life of at least 50 years. So we're now looking into the future, a changed demographic and also a pool that's got to serve. It probably won't do the 80 years of the existing pool, but it has to do at least 50. Although when I look at Moana, 50 years looks like it was built yesterday. The results of the survey were overwhelmingly in favour of a new facility that should include a toddlers' pool, and that's a toddlers' leisure area, a learners' pool, a 25-by-25 lap pool and a hydrotherapy pool. The hydrotherapy pool is something that I'll talk about in more detail later, but it's also dealt with in the report. In developing the concept, we not only drew on previous council reports, but we also benchmarked against every recently built pool in the Lower South Island. So that's Christchurch South. We looked at designs, capital costs, budgets, operational costs and importantly, attendance figures. These findings and these figures played a major role in preparing the report that you have with you and that we're presenting to council today. We're also in committed to an environmentally friendly pool. It has to be green, it has to be future-proofed and it has to be energy efficient. And that is also dealt with in the report. For council, there are significant economic considerations the trust is not oblivious to. The fiscal situation that the council faces, and indeed we all face, is very real. So in coming to council, we're very mindful of the city's position. That's why 98% of the 2,400 people that filled in the online questionnaire supported and agreed to stand beside council and agreed to raise 50% of the money that's required to build a new facility. And that is not an insignificant commitment. Our estimate is 14.44 million for a new pool. So that would leave the community to raise 7.5 million, which is a very large number, but it's one we believe is achievable based on the report the trust commissioned from Comptons and our own investigation. I mean, Mosley advised the trust in the development of the funding strategy and has agreed to head the funding team should the new pool concept move forward. As well as economic considerations, there are also social considerations when contemplating a facility of this type. Drowning is the third highest cause of preventable death in New Zealand. Smoking, car accidents, drowning. New Zealand has the third highest death rate for drowning in the developed world among young males. Every child in New Zealand has the right to access pools to ensure drown-proofing through the opportunity to learn to swim. No one dies from not being able to play rugby, tennis, football, squash or any of the other sports, but people do die because they are unable to swim. The number of school pools struggling to stay open heightens this need. Boards of trustees are facing increasingly difficult decisions when trying to balance the educational needs within constrained budgets. The school pools on the Tairi do not receive council support, whereas the schools within the city do. Many people regard swimming as the most holistic and beneficial form of exercise. There are also significant benefits to those with health issues and that need will continue to grow as our population ages. The hydrotherapy pool is a response to that need. And in all facilities we've looked at, major facilities north of Dunedin, hydrotherapy pools have now become a part of an aquatic centre and they are highly patronised. As a community amenity, pools are enormous. The 650,000 people that visit Moana attest to that fact. But Moana, as we all know, is running at capacity. It is unable to extend significantly. And that means that there are groups and user groups unable to access it in the times that they would like and there are pool groups that are unable to access it. It is therefore, I believe, our responsibility to make provision for additional aquatic facilities, a priority for our community. In the last paragraph of the executive summary, we asked that a new aquatic centre on the Tairi be accepted into the long-term plan. That acceptance would give the trust the opportunity, working with council staff, to ensure that all the financial design and location assumptions are thoroughly challenged and agreed robust. In the nine weeks that we've had or the 10 weeks to prepare this report, whilst we've had tremendous support from council staff, there are assumptions in there that we do need to spend more time talking about. For example, the attendance assumptions. They are higher than in the council reports, but we have benchmarked against pools south of Christchurch. And so those discussions need to be had and need to be had in depth. The design and the costing of it also needs to be worked over in detail with council staff. In addition, it will be the trust's expectation that the community would raise 50% of the entire budget as a precondition of council agreeing to proceed with the new facility. So we're not saying, well, you give us the money and we'll go and raise some. We're saying, we will raise the money. Once we have done that, then that would trigger whatever involvement the council may decide on giving or whatever involvement the council may decide on having. The city faces huge challenges and I've spoken to those earlier. But in acknowledging those challenges, we're faced with really two choices. We can sit and do nothing and wait for the debt lid to sink to an acceptable level and that could take time. Or we can cautiously continue to look to the future and begin planning for tomorrow in partnership with council. And I believe a community and council working together is a path forward. What we agree today, and I'm talking about the trust and council and I'm not talking about this meeting, but what we agree today will take many years to become a reality. But what we don't do today may never happen. So if we start the process now of a dialogue, in my view, it will be a number of years before we got to a point where we could look at commencing the development of a facility. Thank you for your time and I commend the report to you and the appendices as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Happy to take any questions.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Banks?
You've said that it will take many years to happen. Can you be a bit more specific and give us an idea of how many you think realistically it will take?
Thank you, councillor. Yeah, if it goes through council process, I would imagine it would be mid-next year or later before council has agreed on a path forward because I think there's a lot of work to be done. That if we head out and start fundraising, that will take a year and a half to two years. Then there's the whole design process before you start to get near turning aside. So we're looking at a horizon of four or five years. This is not about to start tomorrow. But I think, given the history of council, council will want to be very, very sure that the council is not embarking on a path that is going to catch them and, to use an expression, kneecap them further down the track. That's why I suspect money in the bank is going to be one of the main criteria and agreed costs and agreed processes.
And you've said, or you've drawn attention to the difference between the trust's estimation of attendances and the staff estimation of attendances here. This very crucial ongoing funding issue of results, there's quite a chasm between them. Do you have, for instance, the Selwyn attendance figures to confirm yours? Or do they fall somewhere between the trust estimation and the council's estimation of attendance?
Yes, we do and it's in the report. The council estimations are based on an attendance that is a two-point... There's a very crude measure used and that's per head of population, numbers of swimmers. Now, I have a real problem with that methodology because it simply does not speak to the difference in climate that exists in the south with the north. For example, if you look today, you'll find that the water temperature around Otago is 12 and around Auckland is something in the order of 24. And that will continue to climb as summer increases. So there's a lot less use of pools in the north because of climatic differences. The benchmark that the council has used has taken their attendance and I think Moskill, from memory, was 2.4 on that scale of 10. If you double it, you get to 5.6. I think my figures are close to being right, 5.6. What we're proposing is an eight, which is based at the lower end of all of the other pools we benchmark. Those figures for me are wobbly. The figures I'm most interested in is the amount of people on a similar population base that come through the turnstile. And our estimates are conservative when you look at those figures from the other pools.
Thank you. My final question, there's been a lot of good comparison between Selwyn in particular and the proposal for Moskill, design and other parameters. Are you aware of any other facility that Selwyn, that the Selwyn population has access to, that would give at least some of the Moana pool-type facilities within 15 minutes of the Selwyn pool?
Yes, we are. There are other facilities available to Selwyn and Dudley Park.
So you think basically that based on a fairly wide look at the comparisons, that what you're proposing and from what I understand in this document, the Selwyn proposal are actually very, very close?
Yes.
In demographic, cost, operating costs, etc.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr Hawkins?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Stedman. I have a question about the $7.5 million, the latent potential for fundraising that is outlined here. Is that predicated on it being for a $15 million project?
Yes.
Right. So were it to be a less costly capital project, you would expect not to generate as much money?
Well, we might generate as much, but we wouldn't be required to generate as much if we assume that the council and the community will go 50/50.
Of that 7.5 million, how much of that is public money from other sources? So from the community trust or from, not money from council, but some of it is also public money, I'm assuming?
I would expect that something in the order of two would come from community trusts and other trusts.
And just lastly, I mean, the feasibility study was for optional options and this is one very detailed option. And given timing, I understand why that approach has been taken. You said you rejected early on the idea of doing, working up a like-for-like option, but there is obviously quite a spectrum between those two points. And I was wondering if anything had been done at other points along that.
Well, clearly there's been a lot of conversation. But it really does come down to, when you look at a community and you go 2 to 92, which group of people are you going to not cater for? And that's the dilemma. Would it be the toddlers, which is important to drown-proofing and getting children used to swimming? Or is it the older people? The 25-metre lap pool is a given. The learning to swim is a given. But at the other ends with the older demographic and increasingly so, do you cater for them or do you ignore them? And the same with the toddlers. So it really is a difficult decision. Like with like would simply replicate what is there, which is inadequate. So we looked at the other pools with similar population bases and we modelled on that. We did not model a like-for-like or a reduced. Now, at the end of the day, if council were to come back and say, yeah, we're interested, but we're not interested in 7.5 million, then we'd go back and look at that.
Thank you.
Councillor Lord?
Yes, Michael. I would say as almost a resident of Moskill, certainly a representative of Moskill, there has been quite a lot of talk in the community and I've obviously been involved with different groups that have had your presentations. Do you think there would be a risk? Like at the moment, the community seems quite pumped up that they will raise funds. Do you think delay in this project would have any negative implications for that fundraising process?
Yeah, look, I do. If you get a community engaged, and it is, and when you consider that we've really met with and contacted almost 3,000, 3,500 people, then you've got a huge amount of goodwill and you've got a huge amount of energy in behind that. If nothing happened over the next two, three, four years and you went back to the community and said, right, well, this time, then I think you're going to get a very different outcome. I don't think the community would engage to the extent that they have because they simply wouldn't believe that anything would come out of it. So my feeling, and I can't speak for the community, but my feeling is that if this lost momentum, and I'm not talking about momentum of next week or next year, but momentum over the next three or four years, then it would be very, very hard to go back and say, will you commit again to 50% of a future aquatic facility on the Tairi? I don't think you'd get the same result.
Councillor Lord?
Thank you, worship. Mr Stedman, my question's around finance and councillor Hawkins sort of touched on it. The 7.5 that potentially council may contribute, I emphasise the word may, and you highlighted the point about our fiscal limitations, like any organisation. What would the trust's view be on the wording around any commitment that would need to satisfy credit rating agencies, for example, which would perhaps indicate a maximum available? I know I'm probably jumping the gun here, but what I'm trying to tease out is the commitment from the trust and the community. If, for example, council's commitment was kept and whatever the outcome of the project, that the shortfall would be picked up by the community and the trust collectively. Do you see what I'm saying? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Sort of. Is it, if council came back and said, look, given everything, we can only kick in 6 million, would the community pick up that shortfall? Is that...
More referring to a cost overrun. Where most capital projects usually have that challenge at some point along the way. And let's just say council committed 7.5 million and it turned out to be the overall cost was 16.5. The point I'm trying to make is, rather than council having to commit to that 50% of that additional funding that it was kept at the original, back at the original decision. And the reason why I'm asking is it's around that overall debt loading that the city has in the longer term.
Well, without having consulted with the trust, my view is that if the council commits to 7.5 or whatever it might be, that's what they commit to. They're going to commit to another million on top in case. And all the projects that I've been involved with over the years have always come on time, run budget. And this idea that they can just sort of drift out and somebody pick up the tab, I think those days have gone. And I would be very happy to have very serious conversations with council about the eventuality of overruns and where that rests. I would be very reluctant to develop a line of thinking. They said, oh, we can go back to council for more. I don't think we can.
Councillor Thompson?
My questions need to be asked and answered.
Councillor Hall?
On this cost estimate, it's done on the 5th of the 11th. Is that a cost estimate to do, to build now? Or is it, say, four or five years down the track?
It's to build now.
So what would the estimate cost inflation be for four years? Have you got the idea?
No, I haven't.
Because that's where the money...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely agree. And I think in the report, it says that that hasn't been built into. But if you look at the figures, there is a contingency in there that could absorb some of that.
Thank you.
Councillor Pegg?
Thank you, Michael. And thanks to the trust too for a very comprehensive report to us. I'm just looking at the figures, capital cost figures for Selwyn versus here. Selwyn completed their project in 2013 at 14.7. And you've come to us with a proposal at 14.4. I haven't, I couldn't see any comparison where the savings would be made, those small savings. Or just, I mean, are you, the question is, I suppose, do you think that 14.4... Or just, I mean, are you, the question is, I suppose, do you think that fourteen point four million estimated capital cost is a robust figure?
Yeah.
Given what Selwyn has experienced on a similar facility?
Yeah, we do.
And is it, are we saving, or is the Mozgill project going to save in any particular area that Selwyn couldn't save on?
I think part of it is design, part of it is having the ability and benchmarking against all of those other facilities that have been built, we've learned what went wrong and what didn't go wrong. So we have, in looking at the budgets, looking at their expenditure, we have learned a great deal about what to do and what not to do. And we're confident with that figure, and that figure's been tested pretty robustly. But having said that, the robustness is within a ten-week timeframe.
Council Wylie?
Thank you, Michael. Great report you sent us, and thank you to your team for that. During the annual plan submission, we got a lot on about, from different organizations, talking about creating a sports hub at Logan Park and trying to get sports together. You talk about a couple of pools possibly coming in and creating a similar type of cluster at Mozgill. Have any discussions with Swatatago taken place regarding that?
We have met with Swatatago, yeah. We've met with all of the sports groups and those dialogues continue. And I think in the document you will see that part of our thinking has been, what are the steps beyond the pool? We haven't included those in, but what are the synergies that can be created? And some of those, some of the ideas would be gymnasiums, climbing walls, other sports-related activity that would further enhance the hub. Now, when you look at the proposed or preferred site, it is already very close to a whole range of other sporting activities. So we see this as being part of a growing coalition, if you like, of sporting bodies.
So in follow-up to that, would you have the ability to expand further into Memorial Park? Like you talk of the proposal about a gym and a cafe, but if you were going to expand a bit, a little bit beyond that, do you have further area to develop?
Well, we really haven't, in the time that we've had available, looked at that in detail, nor was that part of the MOU. And I think it would be sort of presumptuous to present something to council that may be ten years away and to start going into that sort of detail. The only thing we've done is acknowledged that that could occur. And we have met with all of the other sporting groups on the Tyrie, all of them support the notion of a pool or an aquatic centre.
And one final question, talking about the funding of seven point five million dollars, would an annual, say, five hundred thousand over twenty years, if that was written into the annual plan, would something like that suffice, or does it have to be a lump sum?
That would depend on the cost of borrowing money, because if you do that over twenty years, then that's going to incur a significant amount of interest. We have always envisaged not necessarily a lump sum on day one, but certainly payments or contributions phased over the development through to completion of the building or the centre. I think going out twenty years would, I'm not good enough with mathematics to do the instant add-on from an interest point of view, but it would be significant.
Council Van, you have another question?
Yes, under design, you've got a square twenty-five by twenty metre pool. And the orientation of it suggests, we've just been talking about possible later expansions, that that could at a later date be expanded to a standard Olympic twenty-five by fifty if it was to come out the side. Is that something that you've considered in the orientation and in the design of the pool, possible later extension?
No. I think what we have done is stayed within the brief of a community facility. Interestingly enough, it's not the first time a fifty metre pool has been raised with me. The first was, interestingly enough, at Strath Tyrie. And I thought that was interesting, for Strath Tyrie to want a fifty metre pool or to believe that we should. No, we haven't considered that. We are mindful of the fact that this is a community pool, that in moving forward with the council or with aquatic teams, all of those ideas can be explored. And it must be remembered that what is in here is a concept, it is not, this is what it will look like. And there's still a lot of water to go under the bridge before we would agree that this is what should be built.
You talked about the right of everybody to have access to a pool to learn to swim when they're young. And I don't think too many people would argue with that. However, I'm trying to find in here a comment from a resident who says that there is also a right for people to have an old age pool, to have all these other various rights as well. Do you agree with that statement in this report as well?
Yes, I do. I think that, and I touched on that earlier, when asked, I think by Councilor Hawkins, whether we could build less, well, you can build less, but you've got to work out who is going to be disenfranchised, who is not going to have access to a pool.
And you're talking about the Mozgill community having access to all these facilities and that you consider that to be their right. Would you consider that also to be the right of other communities and around Dunedin?
I would consider it to be the right of every New Zealander.
Thank you.
Council Thompson, do you have a question?
Look, it's really just a follow-up to the questions around the hydrotherapy pool, the catering for the older age group. You've talked about that in terms of enfranchising the wider spectrum of the population. You haven't talked about it from the perspective of revenue, though. Is it your view that without, well, I understand it to be your view, that without that full spectrum, there is a trade-off also in terms of revenue? That you would have less revenue to cover your operating costs? Would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, the experience with other facilities that have hydrotherapy pools is that the usage was much, much greater than they expected. So if you, and you couldn't do the simple, we'll take off twenty-five percent, that would be a little crude, but we haven't modeled it in detail to get some suggestion as to what impact that would have on revenue, but it would certainly have an impact on revenue.
Further questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr Stedman.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, councillors.
Now, because of time, the time constraints and the time for opening council, I'm going to move from the chair that we adjourned the public forum. At my second, second to Council Staines, and I will then open councils and adjourn council and come back to public forum. That's the process we need to go through because of the time constraints around when we have to start. So we move, the second that we adjourn public forum, all those in favor, please say yes. Aye?
Aye.
Yes, carried. I will now open the council meeting, and I'll move from the chair that we adjourned that immediately. Second to, second to Council Staines, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes, carried. And now I'm happy to reopen the public forum and invite Mr Wetherall, Mr Feather, chairs respectively of the Saddle Hill and Mozgill Tyrie Community Boards. Welcome, gentlemen. Now, as I, can I just reiterate, but as I said at the beginning, ten minutes and that will include questions on parade, but we have a very heavy agenda today in this council meeting.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Your Worship and councillors, thank you. Also like to, just before we start this, I just acknowledge the significant contribution that the staff have made in this matter for a significant period of time, as well as current councillors and previous councillors. So on Saturday afternoon, Bill and I attended with Councilor Wiley a community meeting that was coordinated by the Minister of Parliament, Claire Curran, to discuss with residents and community their concerns in regards to the situation at Saddle Hill. From that, the meeting went on for about an hour and a half, not going to reiterate that. And if you've read the O D T this morning, which I'm sure you have, it actually covers a significant portion of the discussion there and also our points here. So effectively, the main concerns to the residents were that the quarry activity near the skyline continues. There's reasonable footage and edited evidence that that is continuing and that is a concern of the residents. The least, the most minimum standard that the residents and the community will agree to in the ongoing discussions in regards to this situation is that the skyline must be protected. The other concerns are that there is instability and a risk of collapse on the skyline, and there's witnessed rock falls in that area with some video footage, I understand. So that's the ongoing concerns of the main situation at the hill. Just this morning, as we do, daily contacts from the community. A lady contacted me who previously lived on the hill, and she thought possibly, maybe with investigation, that some of the rock initially come out in the nineteen fifties to form the flood free. Just not quite sure whether that's the stock bank, so whether that's worth investigating at some stage. But effectively, the resolutions from the community meeting were to go to the Dunedin City Council that we acknowledge the High Court instructed high-level mediation occur between the Dunedin City Council and the Saddle Hill, Saddle View Estate Limited, and that the Saddle Hill community urges the Dunedin City Council to request the Environmental Court initiate a stop work order urgently on the conditions previously discussed. That the Saddle Hill community requests an urgent independent stability analysis and mine safety inspection to be undertaken, and the results of this used in regards to the mediation process outlined in the previous resolution, again with taking into account the previous discussion and the concerns of the residents. And that the Saddle Hill community requests the Dunedin City Council to investigate public ownership of the Saddle Hill quarry, which I understand they previously had a potential for the future. There's a number of other things that the residents were concerned about, but I think those are the main things to discuss here with the time constraints. Of note, previous elected councillors, representatives and myself, as well as, I understand, Bill, have contacted unsuccessfully Naitahu for a view from them. To date, we haven't had a view from them, but as at Saturday morning, there is now a view from them via Iwi Dallison, who's very, very interested to meet and discuss with the situation and cast a view from Naitahu and other Iwi representatives.
Further to what Scott has outlined, there seems also to be a perception in the community around the belief that the skyline profile is not to change from its shape. What is unclear about that is where does that undertaken lie, on who agreed to that? And if it has been part of a legal or environmental court process or even a gentleman's agreement between the owners of the quarry and the council, then the question that the community stumbles over is, in terms of compliance, where does the responsibility lie to monitor and to mitigate that happening? Most of, quite a lot of the discussion on Saturday afternoon was around the profile and its changing shape. And it's also that had it been observed by the locals for rock falls coming off the profile edge. And so that brought it on, wanting to have an assurance to do with the stability of the faces so that there is no further erosion of the profile and that the workings become manageable with what it has to proceed from this point forward. So as Scott said, the feeling of the meeting was that work ought to be, to stop work, be sought urgently until such time as the understanding of the stability of the slopes was determined and if necessary, what mitigating factors and work needs to be undertaken to achieve any further erosion of the profile of Jeffrae's Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Question? Council Noon?
Your Worship, just noting that because I carry the delegation on behalf of council, I'll be involved in the mediation, so I'll push my chair back.
Thank you. Council Van?
Thank you for that. When you suggest public ownership of the quarry, is what you mean actually that the D C C should buy it to save it like we did Harbaco?
Effectively, that's something that, depending on the outcome of the mediation, that may be something that the council may go back into discussions in regards.
So that is an end point that you actually see as a goal, as a preferable goal perhaps?
If that means protection for any more devastation to the hill, yes.
Given that the hill is already substantially cut and quite steeply, and that natural erosion is going to lose some more of that skyline anyway, you talk about rockfalls already. And given also that, I think I've read that there's a fifteen million dollar price tag on the value of the quarry, do you think it's really feasible for public ownership of the quarry to take place? Do you think it's possible?
So without getting into any discussion on potential value, one of the potential, I guess, outcomes that the council may do is request an independent survey of that and come up with a valuation that they may consider. We don't know what the hills worth, the quarry operator does, obviously, their perceived value. I'd say the council staff got a pretty good idea, but we're certainly not privy to that information at this stage.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Council V.
So I'd like to be contrary, because I'm sure you're concerned about the skyline and the issue, but I wonder what the difference is between the public concern that you're articulating about Saddle Hill and the profile and the current situation and the lack of interest in the destruction of Blackhead, which is now almost complete. Has there been any similar public objection to the quarrying that's happened there?
So my understanding, councillor, is that process effectively, there's a lengthy national process that was undertaken in regards to the consent issued for the quarrying of Blackhead. And the concern is that the process has not potentially been followed or there is not consent, which has obviously been worked through at this time in regards to the Saddle Hill. But there is ongoing concern from residents in regards to the protection potentially or the process that is happening at Blackhead, but there's an acknowledgement that full and public process was taken place in that time.
But my understanding is the latest court decision is that there is a consent in place, even if no one can put their hands on it. Is that not the case?
So my understanding is that there was, there was an understanding that there may be, but there may not be. But they've gone in the, without understanding the exact terminology, they've gone in the basis of more property than less.
Thank you. Right, I'm going to call that to halt now. Thank you, gentlemen. And that brings to an end the public forum. And I note that...
Before we close that, Mr Chairman, is there not a need to actually note this issue? And if our staff currently investigating it with a veto reporting, why do we need to put it on the agenda?
My understanding is that as subject to the court ruling that staff, council staff are meeting with the owners of the quarry, as Councilor Noon alluded, in the next couple of days. And so that, I believe, is one of the reasons that staff could not attend the public meeting, because it was subdued, effectively. Thank you. And I also note that the... And I also note that the issues raised about the proposed Moskew pool by Mr Stedman are the subject of an agenda item later in the council meeting, so we can come to that then.